With your knowledge and expertise. Video study, that's come more recently, the opportunity to be able to take a look at clips, have them broken down by experts in the field. And so that you know what you're looking for when you're talking about hurdling, or talking about some other rules violation that exists out there and you're able to break it down in a video study. That's pretty awesome. I know that the video clip from Hawaii and from other states have been pretty awesome. Hopefully with the expertise that Ken and Dennis and others having this day, we'll be able to do, get some of that from our own state. Preparation, getting yourself ready physically, mentally and spiritually for officiating the game is really, really important. It's not just about showing up for a game 15 minutes before game time and going out on the field and working. It's getting yourself ready. Getting yourself prepared so that you are mentally there, so that you are physically able to do what needs to be done. And spiritually is very important because you're going to take such abuse that you've just got to be have that thick skin and work through it and know that you're doing the right thing. And remember that I think that it was the last, one of the last officials that spoke, I can't remember who it was now. That's one of the things about getting old, you can remember things, but you can't remember everything. Every game is important to somebody. I don't care what level that the game is, take it, take it seriously, go out there and work on something in your game to get better at. And remember that that game is important to somebody, not just to, you know, to you, it may be a little league game, but to that kid's playing, or that daddy up in the stands, or that grandfather that's there watching their grandson or granddaughter play, it's important to them. Learn from your mistakes. Don't hesitate to make your call, make it strong. But if you make a boo-boo, go out there, admit it and go on from that and have a short memory. Don't, don't take it with you forever, but at the same time, learn from those mistakes as you move along. And most importantly, I think, and this is a very important, anybody who wants to be a member of my crew has to adhere to this, you've got to relax and have fun. You know, go out there, work your game, get on each other if you have to, have each other's back, but when it's over, it's over, we're going to have a good time. We're a part of the team. Go ahead, Dennis. Here's the, the rule on roughing the passer. Very basic, roughing the passer, defensive players must make a definite effort to avoid charging into a passer who has thrown the ball from in or behind the neutral zone. After it is clear, the ball has been thrown, no defensive player shall commit any illegal personal contact foul listed in 943 against the passer. 943, make any other contact with an opponent, including a defenseless player, which is deemed unnecessary or excessive and which incites roughness. Go ahead. There's a signal for it, it's pretty simple, personal foul, that indicates it's going to be a 15 yarder. The signal is the arm coming across the body for roughing the passer. And most importantly, it's going to be an automatic first down. Any roughing penalty is going to be an automatic first down. This is really important. This is one call that is the sole responsibility of one official and that's a white hat. I know I've had others that, you know, I think once or twice while I've been working as a white hat, I've had somebody, an umpire or somebody else that throw a rough in the passer and they get some kind words from me after, after we figure out something there. But the success in calling that play, I think is your pre-snap routine as a white hat. Make sure you are lined up on the throwing arm side of the passer. Make sure you know what the situation is, is it third and eight? Is it third and short? I mean, what, what are the tendencies of this team and what have they been doing throughout the game on that same, on that same play? So, and once you get your snap, pre-snap routine down, you're going to have an idea of what you're going to be looking for. As the play develops, and you see it is a pass, I think once the ball is thrown, the words that come out of my mouth as loud as I can so it can be heard is "ball away." And that's kind of the timing I like to use as well. Once I say that, and there still is contact on the passer, very vicious contact, then I'm going to throw my flag because I think that's enough, that's, that's time enough for the, for the rusher to have let up a little bit. There may be some contact because the momentum may take him into the, into the quarterback. But if they're coming in and there's no, there's no way that they're even trying to stop after I say "ball away," I think I'm throwing my flag. Stay focused on the quarterback throughout the play and after the ball is thrown, because if he's, if he's not down, if there's contact, and your first step after that contact is made, even, even if you have a flag, is to look away, there's, there may be some things that happen after that that you're going to miss. So you stay with the quarterback and with that, with that play until everybody separated and moved on. Don't worry about what's going on downfield, you've got your other, you've got your other folks down there that can take care of that. And also remember that roughing the passer can include a blow to the head, can include targeting, can include leading with the headgear, can be a face mask. And for me, the one that I, that I find it difficult sometimes to explain, or coaches don't accept, is that, that rusher that comes in and may or may not let up, but even after the play is done, they extend their arms out through the, through the quarterback and knock him down to the ground. Now, people might say, "Oh, that's no big deal." Yes, it is. I know that if somebody knocks me down to the ground like that, I might get hurt. I mean, and, and you can attribute that to old age or whatever, but I don't want that to happen because you're in an awkward position already. And so, yes, that extension to me is, is unnecessary, unwarranted, and leads to a flag from me. And it's important to differentiate when these occurred during a pass play because targeting is generally not going to be an automatic first down, neither is, neither are any of the other penalties there. But if it's, if it occurs on a passer after the pass is thrown, it's going to result in an automatic first down. So make sure you differentiate between those as you go through. Next, sir.
Before we move on, I had one question on the result of a play when you throw a flag on roughing the passer and enforcement.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, repeat that question.
When you have a flag down for roughing the passer and before you report, you need to know the result of the play to enforce and how you're going to enforce that penalty, if you could cover that real quick before we move on.
Oh, absolutely. You have to know that, for example, if, I thank you for bringing that up, that as I was going through that thought process today between my other work assignments, I should have thought of that, but thank you for bringing it up. That's why we have a crew and others can bring that information up, but that's absolutely correct. If you have a completed pass and a roughing the passer penalty, the end of the run becomes where the, where the, where the receiver was tackled, so you're going to tack on 15 yards to that. And that's going to be where you're going to administer the penalty from. If the pass is incomplete, then you go to the previous spot, administer your 15 and get the automatic first down. Either one leads to an automatic first down whether or not they reach the line of game. So thank you for bringing that up, Dennis. That's an important point as to where that penalty is going to be administered from.
And if the play is a touchdown?
If the play is a touchdown, then you're going to add it to the kickoff.
So is it a spot foul, like if, if he does shoot out, you know, a pass behind the line of scrimmage and they don't make it back to the line of scrimmage, does it go from the end of the play or does it go from the previous spot?
To, to me, I've been doing it, but if I've been doing it wrong, then I'm going to learn something here tonight, but I'd go to the previous spot, attack on the 15 and go from there.
That's what it sounds, sounds like all but one type of rationale. Okay, cool.
Yes.
There's an old referee, I'm sorry, there's an old referee that told me one time, if you go from where it hurts him the most. And that, that's what, that's the application that I've, that I've always gone by, you go from where it hurts him the most. For example, a holding penalty behind the line, you're going to go from, from the spot of the foul. On the, on your roughing penalty, you're going to go to the previous spot, whether regardless of where the penalty took place at, because it's obviously behind the line, you're going to have rough in the passer. So you're going to go to the previous spot and tack on the 15.
Hey David, real quick, before you move forward, talk about how important it is to stay with, you know, you said stay with your key, stay with your quarterback and trust your crew. Talk about trusting your crew. You know how important that is?
Oh my gosh. Hey, you know, you're going to go out there and you're going to, if you're working a four person game or a five person game, those, those three or four other officials with you, you've got to, you've got to trust them wholeheartedly because there is no way you're going to be able to cover the whole field. You've got to trust that when they come to you with a hold, or they come to you with a face mask, or, or some other violation that they're reporting to you, that they've, they've seen the whole play and they're really, truly, truly being a, that you're going to trust them to do what their job is. And if they come to you with a, with the flag that you know they saw it, and you need to go ahead and move forward with it. And so I don't need to be looking up to see the play. I don't need to see the result of whether it was a complete pass or not. I've got guys that are going to do that. I've got to stay with that quarterback. Those of you guys that are white, or you know what I'm talking about, you know that one timer, and it, and if you've done it at all, you've been doing it for a while, that, that OS moment, when you've taken your eyes off the quarterback to look downfield and see if the pass was complete, or to watch the game, and all of a sudden you come back to your quarterback and he's on his back, writhing in pain, wondering, oh, you know what, OS, did I miss it? What did I miss? And so you've got to stay with that quarterback and trust your partners downfield.
I don't know what happened here, sorry guys.
That's all right.
It's okay. While we're waiting for you, Stavon, could you jump in and read the rule out of the rulebook,
Well, that's why I wrote it. Okay, here it is. Roughing the passer ruled 944, 15 yards and a first down from the dead ball spot when the dead ball spot is beyond the neutral zone and A has possession of the ball at the end of the down, and there has been no change of team possession, and the foul is not for an incidental face mask as in 943 or otherwise 15 yards, or otherwise 15 yards and a first down from the previous spot. That would be the incomplete pass. So, right on there.
Thank you. Thank you for reaffirming that. I was worried that I was going to have to look that up in Epro and say, "I missed it, guys." It wouldn't be the first time, it won't be the last.
Yep.
Hey gentlemen, this is Cory. Can I actually, can I ask a question to Dave here?
I think you just did.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, hey Dave, poor Norman in here, fellow white hat here. One of the things I have difficulty on and is the stationary quarterback versus the running quarterback. So, and things that I've seen in the past where we have these running quarterbacks, they often run to the sidelines and as right before they get to the sidelines, they throw the pass, but then we see these, we see these rushers actually shove the quarterbacks out of bounds. And where do we get to the point where the running quarterback, the protection that they have versus, on that rule versus, you know, there's got to be some leniency with the make on contact with the quarterback, because, you know, the quarterback's a runner. If he's out of the ball, he is a runner until the moment he positions himself as a passer.
Right, right. And I, I think you said it yourself, there is a little more leniency if the quarterback is running and then hit after he throws the ball, there is going to be that leniency. But I got to tell you, I got to believe, because I know that, that as I've worked the games, once I see it, I know whether it's a flag or not. And, and there's just that, you know, that three steps, that four steps you give them, or, or they come at them and the contact is made, and then additionally where the contact comes, the shove, I've got it. I've got to throw a flag on that because the shove became unnecessary or, hey, you've had four steps to let up on that play. But if it's like one step or two steps and that quarterback is, you don't, he doesn't know whether he's going to run or not, there's going to be some leniency on that. So I got to believe that when you see it, you're going to know.
Yeah. And harder part is, is that, is not the call, is actually trying to explain it to the, the coach, you know, you know, you're always going to call it on a running quarterback saying, "No, not necessarily." It's like you said, it's, it's the, it's the action itself. How egregious was it? And that's how we have to explain it to them. It's not, not the matter of hitting him on timing, it's the matter of how egregious it was during, in that situation.
Correct, correct. I don't disagree with you, but I think it's one of those, that it's a judgment call and once you see it, you'll know it.
Yeah, and the rule actually says, the 944, that the defender must, the defensive player must make definite effort to avoid charging into the passer who has thrown a ball from or behind the neutral zone.
Right.
He has actually have thrown it to be considered still the passer. So if he's running with it, he hasn't thrown it, or he isn't in the position to throw, then I don't think he gets that, per, per rule, he gets that protection.
No, no protection if he's a runner. He's a runner, he gets tackled, that's all there is to it. But once he throws the ball, that's where the judgment comes in and, and that's where the leniency is if he's, you know, you don't know if he's running or not, boom, and there's contact. But I think if, and I think there's one of the clips that we're going to see that shows that running quarterback to the sideline. And, and, and so we can make, we can take a look at that and see whether or not we would call roughing the passer.
Yeah, that's, that's video number three, and we'll get to that.
Okay.
You ready for number one?
Sure. So here we have the, the guy's stationary, he's right in the pocket.
Let me turn this pointer off here, let me turn the volume off. Can everyone see that video?
Right. So, so I'm just going to look at comments on it. What I see is the guy comes in, hits him legally with the shoulder. Now, whether or not it's roughing or not is going to be on the timing, boom, it looked like, you know, it's hard to tell right there because it's going slow-mo. But that's one of those that you're going to make a judgment on and either have a flag on it or not, but if you're focused, what I, what I noticed was that guy comes in with a shoulder, hits him down below the shoulders as well, I kind of going to be in between a legal hit or not. But I'll, what do you guys think?
But I, I'm looking at this thinking to myself, did he have time to hold up on that hit? And that's what you keep talking about timing, correct?
I see him not trying to wrap up or forcefully take the guy down, so I don't see the roughing. I think it's a bang-bang with the guy hitting him.
And he kind of lets up, kind of lets up, doesn't drive through him or anything like that. He stops right there, he doesn't, I think it's a legal hit and we're okay.
He's, we're also watching it in slow motion, so I would say in real time, it's, it's probably not, but, but, but it is close.
Yep.
I agree with you all, because if you look at it even in slow motion, he really's only taken one step after the throw, and that's just a plant step, so.
Would you guys like to hear what the breakdown is on this? I think the college rule is, is the exact same as the high school rule, if I'm correct. Somebody please correct me if I'm wrong. But just, just what they're talking about on the video itself and how we see it versus how they might see it. And then we'll discuss again, like, if you'd like, I just want to hear it.
Hit to the quarterback after the pass is released and place the elements of the contact into one of the fouls. You have three options. You know, I have a lot of looks at this play. Hit to the quarterback after the pass is released and place the elements of the contact into one of the fouls. You have three options. You know, I have a lot of looks at this play.
Right. So after the pass is released, right, going back to the rule, and the elements of it, ball's thrown, contact to the passer, voidable, unavoidable, it's a unnecessary roughness or excessive under 934G. You know, so we have all these elements that are going to go through our mind, like, and timing, like Dave, David said.
Hit to the quarterback.
You know, we just have to, we're seeing it in slow motion, but remember what those elements are when you're looking at this on the field.
See, look, look how many steps he takes after the ball's thrown. It's like one step, it's not even, it's not even two, there, the ball's gone and it's like, boom, he's there.
You know, the, the thing is, is things can look ugly, but they don't have to be
But the keys to me is that he does not lead with his headgear, he comes in with his shoulder, he's below the quarterback's shoulder, so I, and it's slow motion, so still hasn't changed for me. I don't think I'm throwing my flag on this one.
Yeah, and I think they said that because his body language, the defender's body language showed that he tried to hold up and pull back.
Right.
He wasn't trying to apply and punish the quarterback.
Right.
I don't know if there was a flag thrown on this or not, I don't remember, but that's one thing that they talked about was what was the body language of the defender when he was making contact with that quarterback?
And that's why it's important to stay with the play the whole time. Don't, don't look downfield, stay with that quarterback and that player because other things might happen afterwards, but you can clearly see that, boom, he stops, he doesn't drive through, and again, body language is such that he's looked downfield to see what happened. He knows that he hit the quarterback, quarterback, I mean, everything's okay with me on that play. Here's that running quarterback to the sideline, stops, boom. Again, you look at all the elements that are there, he does, I think he does not let up. And I think, guys, I'm looking at it, there is some, some, he hits him above the shoulders in the, with, he leads with his headgear in a sense, hits with his shoulder and his headgear. I think I've got a flag on this one.
This one, I see, I see the defender taking at least two, two and a half steps before contact. So this is quite a bit different than the previous one.
And the other thing, he drives right through him, he has.
Good point on the mechanic.
He drives right through him, headgear to headgear, I've got a flag. Any other comment? I mean, that's, that's what I've got.
We purposely got three different clips to help get questions out of the group, so guys, please ask questions, jump in.
And if your, if your opinion is different, please chime in and let us know why.
Ken, this is Cory. Actually, I can't see the videos.
Were you able to see the slides at all?
Slides were up during the beginning, but then as we get started, it actually went away.
Can you see that?
I'm just getting the AFPA ref logo.
Dennis, I see, I see everything perfectly. Brad or somebody else, Sean, you want to jump in? Do you guys view it?
I see it. I think it might be, because he's on his phone.
I see it.
Yeah, that is, I'm on my phone.
I agree with you, David. I think that this is a, a flag should be thrown on this. He takes two to three steps and the passer to establish himself and release the ball cleanly. I think a flag would, you could justify a flag definitely on this one.
Yeah, he could have let up a little bit. When he dipped that headgear down, that's what clinched it for me though. He could have let it, let that up, definitely, so.
Yeah, it's the headgear and the dip on him, because he was trying to impact him.
I think we've got a.
And not only impact him, I think he was trying to punish him. And that's some of the stuff that we are trying to officiate out of this stuff is, there's a difference between making a hit, punishing a quarterback.
Can't see the body language afterwards, but it almost looks like he's trying to This is a really close play here. I like where the official is at, he's lined up deep and wide, so he can get that good angle wherever it's at.
I was just about to ask you about the mechanic of the referee on this.
Stay wide, you know, we're not going to outrun him, at least I'm not. I don't know about the rest of you guys.
I think we have no flag. I think he's trying to throw it away at the last second and the hit is appropriate.
It's not, it's not excessive. I didn't see that big push with the extending of the arms out afterwards or anything like that. It's a good clean hit. Comes in, boom.
Is the H or the L going to have a, an opinion on the late hit out of bounds here?
They certainly should. They're going to have a better look on the out of bounds piece than, than the white hat is, based on their position. But when you look mechanically at, but what you're doing as a white hat, you're going to be lined up 15 yards, at least 15 yards deep. And I think probably about as wide as your tight end, maybe a little bit wider, so you can get a good wide look at the field. And that gives you a kind of a head start to get where you need to get, should that quarterback start to scramble or spread that offense out towards the sideline, so you can get the angle you need to make the call that you need. It's about angles, it's not about being on, right on top of the plate, it's about getting the angle you need to see what's happening so that you can make the appropriate call. But you're right, the, the H or the L is going to have to help with the illegal hit out of bounds if that occurred. I don't think it occurred on this one, but they certainly would have the, the best look to make that call.
Cory, just so you know, this is the, the play, your, your question about the runner, the quarterback running towards the sideline, and he throws the ball just as he gets to the sideline and gets hit.
Yeah, matter of fact, I finally figured out how to watch the video on here now. So, yeah, looking at this, I would agree, this was a very last second ditch effort on the quarterback. He's still a runner at that point, and there's no way that that individual can let up as he throws that ball. So, but one thing that I do as a white hat, I'm going to be helping cover with the linesman on this one as they go out of bounds, and I'm just going to kind of watch him to see if he, you know, I'm going to say, "Do you have a clean hit?" I'm just thinking to mind, "Do you have a clean hit?" Because at that point, you know, I want to make sure that we're both on the same line when it comes to, because really, like I said, this is not an easy call for late hit out of bounds for a white hat. This is more like I said, on the linesman's deal, so I want to try to get with him.
So, so David, let me ask you a, a question about philosophy on this play.
Okay.
Say this, you see this in the fourth quarter, late in the fourth quarter, score's pretty tight, it's pretty close, you know, offense is, is winning, or I'm sorry, yeah, offense is winning, defense needs to get the ball back and, you know, we're under five minutes.
Okay.
For three and a half quarter, this quarterback has been running this play, and every time he gets to the sideline, he stops, jukes, and he takes off back towards the middle of the field to gain extra yardage, right?
Okay.
And defense have been, I guess, fooled on the, on, on him going out of bounds and he keeps getting an extra five, 10 yards running because they expect him to go out of bounds, but they, he doesn't, he continues to go up, back into the field and back up. But then you have this play at the end of the, of the game, and it's kind of close of late hit out of bounds or targeting or roughing the passer. Does that go into your thought process of giving the defense a little bit more leeway on a hit like this because of what this quarterback was doing for three and a half quarters?
You know, I, you know, I'm not sure. When I talk about philosophy wise, again, I go back to all, all my mentors over the years and the folks that have taught me, and basically they say, "If you didn't, if you're not going to call that one in the first quarter, don't call it in the fourth." That kind of philosophy. So when I'm looking at, and yeah, he may have been tearing them up and all of a sudden they're covering him, the, the leeway is going to be, I'm still going to make my judgment based on what the call is. The, the leeway is going to be, I, I'm still going to make my judgment based on what the call is. Uh, what's happening during that one play? And was the hit legal? Cause if he's leading with the headgear or the crown of the head, or he's reaching up and he pulls, let's say he pulls a face mask on this one. Is it gonna be a roughing penalty or face mask penalty? Cause it could make a big difference in the, in the outcome of the game between an automatic first down and a face mask because he's still a runner, is he a passer? You know, if you look at where the contact's being made, the ball's still in the, almost still in the, in the quarterback's hands, right there in the slip that you have frozen here. And it, and the contacts being made. So what are you gonna have? So again, philosophically, you're going to, to make your ruling based on what you see at the time the play happens and what your judgment is at that time. You know, I'm not, I, I don't know. Maybe there's some other guys that are quick thinkers out there. I'm not smart enough to really put all that stuff in my mind that this guy's been eating them up and I'm gonna give him leeway and I really can't. I mean, I see what you're saying. I can do that after the fact and, and after I study film and maybe pick up on it later on. But while the game's going on, real speed, I'm just gonna make a judgment based on that one play.
Yeah, I agree with you on that. I mean, we have to officiate each individual play on merit of its own and what happens on the field.
Hey Dennis, there's a question real quick in the, uh, chat box. If an offensive lineman gets a personal foul for retaliating after a roughing foul on the quarterback, how are the fouls sorted out?
Okay, I'll, I'll give my chance. The first one, it, one's a live ball, the other one's a dead ball. So you're going to administer the live ball penalty, which is the roughing penalty, right? That's going to be either 15 yards tacked on to the end of the, the play. Or if there's an incomplete pass, you're gonna put 15 yards from the, uh, from the previous spot. And it's gonna be an automatic first down. Then the, the other play is a dead ball foul. And so you're going to take that and you're going to, after you mark off the first penalty, you're gonna mark off the, the dead ball penalty 15 yards back. And teammate still has the ball first and 10 from that spot.
Hey Dave, you know what? I, one thing I love about these type of plays, there's so many things happen on this. Another aspect is intentional grounding. On this. So we're watching the, we're watching as he's going out, he's throwing a last ditch effort. We're watching to make sure that there is no roughing the quarterback, no late hit. But now we also gotta look, where did the ball go? Is he throwing it? Uh, he's on one step in bounds when he's throwing this way. And you know, the ball didn't go far.
Yeah, we don't know what the, what the play is, so.
You know, you, you know, here, here's one of the things that we, we pregame this in, in my pregame with Mike Cruz. Is we'll pregame this, this situation. We'll talk about, hey, if you see that there was nobody in the area where the quarterback was throwing and that it was intentional grounding, don't ever believe that I'm gonna have the same call because my eyes are with that quarterback and not downfield. So I have no clue where, what happened and where the ball was thrown. Uh, unless I have that angle. Sometimes you have that angle and sometimes you don't. But I guarantee you, there's been times that I've stayed with that quarterback. I have no idea what happened downfield. So somebody's gotta come tell me, this is what occurred. This is what I have. And I don't hesitate to have a flag at that point and say, hey, we've got intentional grounding. But, but I, my crew to communicate with me and let me know. If, if, if they don't let me know and, and we screw that up as a crew, then we, we screwed it up as a crew and we move on. But, uh, I've gotta trust my guys to, to be able to come back and communicate with me and let me know this is what happened. And so let's me know what we have to do. I don't know, other white hats out there, what do you, how do you guys handle that?
Yeah, I do rely on my, uh, linesman and, uh, back judges to come in and, and tell me that there was nobody in the area. Uh, that's just one of the things we pregame, especially when we have a quarterback running to the side. They say, just be aware of that, that he is scrambling for his life and he's behind uh, the, his line of scrimmage that just be careful that if he's taking a last ditch effort, you know, we got to watch to make sure he doesn't try to, you know, save himself by throwing it away like that.
Right. Now, there's, there's another piece of this. It could happen. Let's say there's a, there's a, uh, receiver five yards downfield. And he throws it obviously, obviously on purpose, 15 yards over his head out of bounds. I'm gonna let that one go and say, it's just an incomplete pass. The receiver was there. He obviously threw it. Uh, but it, to me, that's not intentional grounding. That's just smart play by the quarterback. He sees the receiver in the area and throws in that direction. Obviously there's no way anybody's gonna make that catch. And so, uh, but I, I'm not throwing it, uh, in intentional grounding on that play. Even though everybody and their mother knows he threw it out of bounds on purpose, but he's got a receiver in the area.
David, on a play like that, this is Brian Peral from the Albuquerque group. Um, I don't require the wings to do this, but some do and it's, it's a, it's nice and it's easy and it lets the fans and coaches know. If they see a receiver in the area and they point to him, even though he might be near other players. If they just come out and they look at me and they point to where the receiver is, then that tells everybody that this wing official has a receiver in the area. That's why I, as a wing official, do not have grounding. So I really like the arm coming out and pointing to the receiver to indicate.
That's a great mechanic and that's one of the things that, uh, we, we, we've, we've started doing that in the, out of the Clovis group as well. And we, we talk about it and we, we really have. And that really helps because you're right. It's one of those things that'll, I don't call it a crew saving thing, but it's one of those things that brings credibility to the crew. When that type, type of communication can be seen, but not only by the coaches on the field and the players, but also the fans. That, hey, this guy knows what he's talking about. There was a receiver right there and they're talking to each other in that manner. So. I think that's a good way to communicate with each other and a good way to give credibility to the crew that, yeah, we know what we're doing. The receiver was in the area. It's not. In no way or shape or form was that intentional grounding. So that's great. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah. And we'd like to rely on the O two Os, but that, that is a mechanic that still be, should be used, even though we have O two Os.
Right.
Was there any other questions?
Well, I, I've got one real quick. David, what, I, I don't want you to go through your whole pregame, but you know, let's say you have some first or second year wings. And, uh, you know, are you prepping them exactly for this situation?
You know, we, we talk about a whole lot of different things. I don't know. It depends on, on where we're going. And I'm gonna tell you something, we mess around with, I don't know how you guys mess with your crew members, but we mess around with ours like it's unbelievable. We abuse them before they even get there. Uh, we'll tell, we'll give them a heart to them, but hey, oh man, you're gonna be on so and so sideline. They're gonna get them. But so by the time our guys get there, they're so wound up, we don't know what they're gonna do. No. But we do talk about, because those of you who know Southeastern New Mexico, that our closest game's gonna be an hour to two hours away. So we're gonna be able to talk a lot on the trip up there. I know I took, uh, a, a young man with us to our, to, to Bulldog Bowl this year. First time in Bulldog Bowl. First big game for the, for this young man. And, and I told him, I said, get ready. I said, you're gonna be able, you're gonna run your butt up and down the field and here's what I need you to look for. We talked about situations all the way through the, through our trip. Uh, once we got to the game, we went through our pregame, this guy was working the umpire position. That poor guy, when the game was over, said, you know what, I'm okay working six man football. You don't have to bring me here. He was wore out, uh, soaking wet, but, uh, you're right. We've gotta be able to prepare our, our younger officials as we bring them up into these games and give them those experiences. And let them know, hey, here's what you're gonna face. Here's what you need to be prepared for. Here's what we want you looking for. Uh, and, and, and don't throw unnecessary flags. Make sure you're getting the big, those, all those types of things are covered. So. Whether or not we're covering that one particular item, I wouldn't say we necessarily do. But it's just become part of our pregame every game. And, and, and the guy, you know, I, I have my son as one of my wings. Uh, my oldest son and, and, uh, another guy that, that I will work with pretty much on a regular basis. So they know what I expect from them. And I know what they expect from me in terms of, of working together as a crew. So. Uh, you're right. We gotta cover it. We've gotta make sure that people understand what they're looking for. Yeah, but I've got my closing thoughts real quick and we've already done the comments and questions, but I, remember to be a good team player. We've heard that from just about every official that it gives, that we've listened to the last couple of weeks. And, and, and always, always be the official or the crew that everyone wants to see walking on the field. You know, I can tell you one thing that, uh, you know, as a player or as, if you've ever coached, you've seen some, somebody coming to officiate the game you're about to, to, to play in or, or that you're coaching in. Uh, you think, man, we're gonna get screwed today. Are you, are you, but you wanna be that crew that says, man, we're gonna be, we might not agree with every call we make, but they're the ones we wanna have. And number one, and finally have fun. You know, if you're, if you're still doing this for, for the money, you don't do it as long as I have. I'm gonna be starting my 36th year next year as an active official. Uh, I don't do it for the money anymore. I do it cause I still have fun. When it quits being fun, I will quit officiating at home. And be the grandfather I need to be. And that's all I got, folks. Thank you so much for the opportunity to, to share information. And thank you for sharing with me.
So I, I'll speak for about 25 of us that are on the call. Uh, we appreciate the time you put in and not only doing this, uh, presentation, but all the years of service.
And happy birthday, Ken.
Yeah, 64, baby. 64 and going.
Dana, you still there?
I am still here.
Done anything before we, uh?
I, I can't think of anything. David, thank you so much. That was really good information and, uh, good conversation from everybody as well. And to echo what Ken said, thank you for your years of service to the NMOA. Um, to the Southeast region and, uh, really to all the four sports that you've worked over the years. Um, it's always great when we have our, our, uh, state leadership take part in these as well. We don't, you know, it's great to have NFL people and NCAA, but it's also awesome to hear from our local leaders and and really, uh, make sure that we're on the same page that way. So it's certainly appreciated. And to the officials, you've probably say this every week, but thanks so much for spending time on a Tuesday evening. I think it's Tuesday. Uh, do the days even matter anymore? I don't know. But for spending time on a Tuesday evening in A- in April, almost May to work on your craft of football officiating. Uh, this will definitely keep you ready as we hopefully have a season this fall. I'm keeping my fingers crossed and say, you know, sending positive vibes and everything else I could do to, to make sure that happens. Cause I know how much you all wanna get back on the field and, and the kids of course do as well. But that's all I've got. Ken and Dennis, thanks for hosting again.
Uh, thank you Dana. And I think that this is, this is, um, even more important talking to local officials like David, because we're able to dive into the rule book and talk about high school rules. Whereas, um, other speakers, it's more philosophy and, um, things outside of our rule book and our mechanics. So. Um, I think this is, is very, very important of what we did tonight because of the rule aspect itself. So thanks, Ken.
I agree. I agree.
Thank you everybody for joining in. Stay healthy and Dennis, when's our next podcast?
Next one will be Thursday night, 6:00 PM. Uh, Mike Burton, Division Two Director of Football Officials. Friday, May 1st is, uh, at 5:00 PM, Tom Schroder, Pac 12 Umpire, talking about offensive holding. Saturday, May 2nd, 10:00 AM. NFL referee Scott Novak, and he'll be giving a presentation on game day, pregame. So, uh, tie into what David talked about today about preparing yourself, uh, to step onto the field.
Beautiful. Nate, what do you think about that lineup?
What's that?
What do you think about that lineup?
Hey, that's an awesome lineup. Uh, you know, I, shoot, I enjoyed, uh, everything that David had to, 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 you know, going back to his, uh, comments about rule two, I'll never forget. Uh, one of the first things I learned from him was remember rule two, doesn't follow the rule book, but or your definitions, right? So, you know, um, and so that's kinda something that's always, I've always carried is if you know your definitions, I think you can, you can use that, uh, in your game for sure. So I thought that was, uh, definitely, uh, something that reminded me of something he taught me way back when.
Hey, it wasn't that long ago, buddy.
Well, at least when I first started for sure.
All right. I think if nobody has anything else, let me check the chat real quick. I don't think, I don't see anything in the chat room. So I'm gonna leave it as what David started off with. Your path to, to success, make it, make it your own. Thanks, David.
Thank you guys. See y'all later.
Everybody take care. Thanks guys. See you later.
Thank you guys. See ya.
Hey Dennis, you still there?
Yes.
Um, that, that was cold Nate. That was the first time Nate jumped on, isn't it?
Yeah, please. So, hold on, Ken. Okay, you there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I kicked those guys out. Let me lock the meeting so nobody could log back in.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Yeah. Just me and you. Let me turn off the camera or the recording.